Salt of the earth. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the public hearing on March 11th, 6:30 PM. This public hearing is for Council Order 2024-016, National Grid Independence Ave. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So, does anybody want to speak in favor or against? So seeing none, no further public comment. I will close this hearing at 6:31 and we'll be back at 6:35 for the next public hearing. Thank you. Welcome back. I'd like to call again the Monday, March 11th, 6:35, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2024-017, National Grid Franklin Street and Ritchie Road. At this point, I would like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So would anybody like to speak in favor or against? Sounds good. At this point, I'd like to call the, close the hearing, seeing that there's no public comment, at 6:36. And we'll be back at 6:40 for the next public hearing. Thank you. It's Groundhog Day. I'd like to call Monday, March 11th, 6:40, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2024-018, an MBTA charging station, National Grid, Independence Ave, Federal Ave, and Gaudet Street. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like to show your support or opposition recorded, please just sign on the back, on the table in the back of the chamber. So seeing that, seeing that, does anybody want to speak in favor or against? Seeing that, there is none, I am going to close this meeting at 6:40 and we'll be starting the council meeting at 6:45. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We'll call the March, Monday, March 11th, 2024 City Council Meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Counselor Ash. Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Devine. Counselor Debona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Minton.
Present.
President King.
Present.
Eight members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please rise for a moment of silence. Please use this moment as you will. Please turn to the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the open meeting law?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and that deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, first item on the agenda?
Number one, update on Long Island and Moon Island.
Okay, so we're going to have an update on the situation with Moon Island and Long Island, and the solicitor from the city, Jim Timmons, is going to lead that.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I want to thank you on behalf of the mayor. He asked to have this placed on the agenda as a result of some activity that's occurred over the last couple of weeks out on Moon Island in particular. But we're going to wrap in a little bit of the Long Island story as well. Over the last few weeks, Mr. Conlin and Inspection Services, the Director of Inspection Services, and I have been out to Moon Island like four times. He's had inspectors out there. There is work that's been going on out there that started the same way the requests for an order of conditions on the Long Island Bridge started. It's relatively innocently. In February, beginning of February, the city received this emergency certification form from the city of Boston. And when you look at it, it's absolutely devoid of detail. This is the same problem we had with the Long Island Bridge Conservation Commission application, that there was not adequate detail for the city to take any action. But this one is somewhat stunningly devoid of detail. All that Boston said was that they're looking to repair four eroded roadway shoulder areas. Now, I just made a mistake that I wanted to make sure I corrected tonight. I said Boston. We're talking about the Boston Public Works Department. I have people say to me that, well, I've talked to City Hall about this, and I don't know if they mean the granite building, the glass building, or perhaps an individual. So I want to make sure that we understand who we're dealing with, and it's Boston Public Works. They're the applicant, they were the applicant for the Long Island Bridge project as well. And when you see what's gone on here, I think you'll be as upset as we were as this played out during the month of February. The reason this is interesting, this request, is that Boston, there are two reasons actually. Number one, Boston has consistently denied in the court cases that played out after the original permitting process that they're going to do any work on Moon Island roadway, the causeway. I've highlighted it's regrettable, I'm seeing now. This PowerPoint was done by an amateur without support. And I'm sorry that some of what's up on the screen is not clear and legible perhaps to the public. But I'll read what the lower sentence says in this first one. Boston is saying that the notice of intent does not propose any repairs or other work on Moon Island Road. It's not part of the application. So this was done in December of 2020. And a little later that month, the judge in Suffolk Superior Court relied on the fact that Boston had said it was not working on Moon Island Road. And actually, this quote is found in the decision as well. The Quincy Conservation Commission relied on a cumulative impacts analysis and relied on the fact that there was nothing provided regarding needed repairs to Moon Island Road. So the Quincy Conservation Commission said in December 2020 that this road had to be repaired. Boston denied that it was doing any work. And then, again, in the Superior Court appeal, or rather, the SJC appeal, there's a large section devoted to the fact that, and I'm quoting, "The commission's reliance on Boston's failure to quantify impacts to resource areas arising from repairs to Moon Island Road causeway suffers for the same reason. Boston does not propose work to the Moon Island Road causeway." So they've said this now in 2020, again in 2022. And another interesting aspect of this is back in March of 2019, our Public Works Commissioner, Mr. Graziosi, sent a letter. This was back during the Long Island permitting process. And in that letter, which is dated March 21, 2019, he's talking about the need for information regarding a Moon Island Road pipe. That's a sewer pipe that runs under the section of Moon Island Road that goes from Squanum out to the fork, where if you go to the left on Moon Island Road, you head down to the Fire Academy. If you stay to the right, you go out toward the Police Firing Ranch. Well, back in 2019, Commissioner Graziosi was telling Boston that he wanted information about that pipe because he took the position, or not took the position, he was concerned about the fact that a culvert, that the pipe was laid in, was failing, and that that was causing the issues on Moon Island Road. We'll come back to that in a minute. I want to refer you to this city of Boston letter that came in with the February 2nd application to the city for an emergency order. The last paragraph says, "The proposed roadway repairs have been designed and completed." So the city engineer, the DPW department, they're telling us that they've done design work on this project, and yet, if you recall the first panel I showed you, completely blank, no detail whatsoever. The other thing that he's talking about in the second paragraph, and I'm quoting, "Erosion of some portions of Moon Island Road is an emergency threatening first responders." So he relied on the existence that the Fire Academy is out there to claim that now suddenly conditions that we had been talking about in Quincy since 2019 were now an emergency. Well, back in 2019, Commissioner Graziosi was concerned about it. Our Conservation Commission was concerned about it, and Boston's response consistently was, "We're not proposing any work on Moon Island Road." So for that reason, we were consistently rebuffed by both DEP and the courts on review. But that's changed this week. This is the plan that Boston DPW provided for where they want work to be done. They have locations A, B, C, those are on the, those locations are on the causeway, which is the section of the roadway running from Squanum out to Moon Island. And then there's a section D, which is directly opposite the Police Firing Ranch. Well, interestingly, this plan, it's actually just a photo that's been marked up, which looks quite similar to the plan submitted by Boston, was the attachment from Commissioner Graziosi in March of 2019. He said that that section of the road from start to end was a problem, and I want information about it. And his letter was not to Boston DPW because they had consistently rebuffed Quincy during the conservation permitting process. This letter was sent to the General Counsel of the Boston Water and Sewer Division. And I think Commissioner Graziosi will confirm, no response. So Boston continued to ignore us as we tried to talk to them about this work. And the reason for this, I'll get into it here, is that the Long Island Bridge project is something that they are moving along at all costs. This next panel is an email chain that was exchanged between Nora Connors, the Conservation Commission Administrator, who's quite excellent at her job, and the engineer, who's a private engineer privately retained, working with the city of Boston. And what I'd like you to do is take a look at the middle, where there's an email from Samuel Moffett to Nora Connors, and note the date and time. The date is Friday, February 2nd, and the time is 1:20. So when you consider the letter and prior panels, can I go backwards, Jen? Okay. My private life, I'm good at that. I don't know about on PowerPoint. This letter dated February 2nd references in the last paragraph the fact that they have done their planning and they're ready to go to work. Well, one of the things that is most offensive that Rob Conlin and I were talking about, about this email, is when you seek an emergency certificate for work, the responding municipality has 24 hours to get back to you on it because it's an emergency. So Boston, which in the letter from its DPW engineer says, "We've planned this out," sent to us on a Friday afternoon at 1:20 PM. They should have waited until 4:29 and just been all the more obvious about it. So fortuitously, Nora Connors responded and said, "I will update my agenda. You're on our next meeting," which was February 7th. So she felt by doing that, she took the 24 hours off the concern list. But it was the best that could be done in any event. Concom's meeting on the following Wednesday, and that's when we put her on the agenda. They called the matter at the start of the meeting. No one was there from Boston. They called the matter at the end of the meeting. No one was there from Boston. No one ever showed up. So what were we left with? Quincy's Conservation Commission was left with this blank form and no information. Now, we were upset about that, but it was more upsetting when we heard a little over a week later from the DEP. So this next panel is a February 15th notification from the DEP to the city of Boston engineer, the gentleman who signed the application to the city of Quincy, but didn't share with us the fact that on February 8th, he had reached out to DEP asking for the emergency certificate. So February 2nd, a Friday, they asked Quincy, at the next possible time that we could deal with it on February 7th, the Concom calls for the matter. No one's there. They called for it at the end of the meeting, no information. So the next morning, Rob Conlin sent out a letter to Boston. He sent an email to them in the morning saying, "We've denied this information. If this is an emergency, just send us some information." But instead, what Boston did, which I'm quite certain was the plan all along, was they went to DEP directly. And regrettably, I believe that, given the history here and the fairly prominent history of the Long Island dispute with Boston, I'm sure that at DEP, they may perhaps have thought that Quincy and Boston are at it again, and they issued the emergency certificate because why wouldn't you if, according to the letter that the administrator from DEP indicated, she said that she had been told that there was an issue with public safety, and so in order to eliminate that threat, they issued the emergency certificate. Now, the emergency certificate, right there, the first page is, presents the same problem to us in that it doesn't really say much. It says, "Abatement work to stabilize areas of Moon Island that have eroded." Doesn't talk about any particular description, doesn't provide any means or methods regarding the work. So the ability of the city to enforce any violations with something like that is minimal as you might imagine. Well, in addition to this, this particular individual who's been out to Quincy a few times, I met her back when we did the track, and she's very conscientious, she imposed some special conditions, which you can see at the bottom. They're highlighted. And the easy one, the layup one, the first thing they were supposed to do was to install erosion controls. Wherever they were working, they had to install erosion controls so that the silt and rocks wouldn't run into the Squanum Bay on one side or essentially Boston Harbor on the other side. So they were to begin by doing that, and they were to leave those erosion controls in place until DEP said, "You can remove them now." Well, Rob Conlin and I, well, prior to that, I sent a two-page letter that I won't go through with you fully here, but in which we objected. We said, "There's no emergency." We gave them copies of Commissioner Graziosi's work. We explained that these conditions have been here for years. It's nothing new. You may recall that the prior U.S. Attorney filed a civil rights action against the city, saying that we were only taking the enforcement actions that were relevant to the Long Island Bridge for improper reasons. While I met two assistant U.S. Attorneys who were handling the case out on Moon Island. I met them in, I believe it was August of, I have the date here, but I think I'm getting ahead of myself. It's in here, and I'll tell you when. But I met them in August of, I believe, 2022. And we took a walk around. I showed them what was going on. I showed them a fence that had brown rust on it that had been there for decades. And I said, "This is what we're bothered by." And I think, as you're all aware, a few months later, when the acting U.S. Attorney, Joshua, well, I'll say Attorney Levy, I believe it's Joshua, he dismissed this matter after these U.S. Attorneys have been out and visited and saw that this was a completely meritorious action. So we objected. Boston didn't really take any action in relation to our objection, but we had it docketed. And then on February 22nd, Rob Conlin and I took a ride out just to check on what was going on. And Boston started the work. They were dropping large boulders, they're called rip rap, dropping them over the side. They had heavy equipment out there, and there was nothing as far as erosion controls. There's a couple of typically used ones, silt, silt socks, hay bales, and then there's a snow fence. Well, silt socks and a snow fence are what should have been used out here, but there was nothing. So Rob Conlin issued a stop work order. He put conditions on it. Those are conditions from the city of Quincy. They basically say, "Don't do anything until you come back and show us the installed erosion controls at a minimum." And then Rob also asked for them to give their plan. What means were they going to be using to finish this job? Concurrently, we notified DEP, and this was serendipitous because now suddenly we had DEP issued an enforcement order, and then I'll skip through to the, let's see. They issued what's called a unilateral administrative order, a UAO, and they informed Boston that they were to stop everything. They were to do precisely what Rob Conlin talked about. They talk about a $25,000 a day fine, all kinds of measures here. Well, that was important because it stopped the work for a period of time, and we thought that we'd finally be able to talk to Boston about what was happening here, the DPW. This morning, Mr. Conlin sent Jimmy Anderson, one of the inspectors, out, and Boston was back to work. I had gone out on Saturday and taken a look at everything, and I said to Rob, "These guys are working here." I saw some silt socks, but what they did is, if you've seen them, they're supposed to take those and put them down along the shoreline to stop anything from running into the water. They just laid the silt socks out on Moon Island Road and then continued dumping right over it. So there's, Jimmy Anderson has pictures, which I could not get for you today, showing areas where there were silt socks on the roadway, and there's rocks and all kinds of other stuff on the other side. And this is on the harbor side, which should be more concerning to DEP because it's the waters of the United States. So we sent those pictures up to DEP, and I heard back today about 4 o'clock that they're going to be coming out again this week. So the reason we're calling this to your attention here, there are a couple of things here. Number one, there's been activity, and the Squanum community is very sensitive about that activity. Counselor Harris, we've been keeping in touch on all of this. The police have become involved. When Rob Conlin and I first met on February 22nd, Mr. Walker thought it prudent to convene, you know, more of a team-oriented approach. So we have the police chief, Rob Conlin, and I sat in a meeting, and we're using our municipal ordinance. We have an ordinance that, I have on a disk, I didn't get it into the PowerPoint, but I can pass on it for now. But I know that Counselor Harris is aware of this. We have an ordinance prohibiting, I'll call it the types of trucks that are going out there now. And there's signage, and what happened was the police chief assigned, I think he's Lieutenant Feierti? Did I promote him? He's a sergeant? Okay. He acts like a lieutenant. Sergeant Pat Feierti was assigned to the matter because he handles special events. He handles like the traffic stuff that goes on in the city. And the first thing he did, which we appreciated, was he went out there and he talked to the contractors. And he gave them, rather than a citation, he gave them a warning and indicated, because he said to us, "The problem here is Boston DPW. It's not the private contractors. And if you cite a contractor, it's the driver of the vehicle who actually gets in trouble," which we didn't know, but Sergeant Feierti did. So rather than have, you know, these individual people who are, you know, working for an employer who's working for the city get in trouble, he told them that, "You come out here and you can be cited, and you will be cited. And now we're, because of what happened today, we're going to institute some traffic control measures through the Traffic Division, where they're going to sit out there and they're going to turn away trucks." So we're being more aggressive with Boston, but what's helpful here is DEP now, twice, essentially has been, you know, I'll characterize it as embarrassed, whether that's fair or not, I don't know. But I know that we're very upset after the first violation. Issuing a UAO is a strong measure. They cited our objections. You know, we have pictures and everything. And this history or problem with Boston doing just what it wants to do when it wants to do it, I think we're finally going to be able to rein that in a bit, and that's at a critical time. Because interestingly, at the end of this month, we have a site visit with the DEP Administrative Law Judge. We're going to be going out on a boat and looking at the piers, Long Island, Moon Island. Then we're going to come back to a Boston site and drive out and look at the Moon Island side. So there's a lot going on this month, and we wanted the councilors to be aware of it because one of the factors here that's been extremely helpful is we've had an appropriate budget to deal with this. We're using outside counsel that have been terrific. They've handled this DEP appeal, which frankly, you know, our office would have got swamped by the amount of work that's gone on. It's It's been terrific having outside counsel, we've got consulting experts who are helping us out, Council Harris was an advocate for the funding, and I know that it's unusual for us to have this type of case where, you know, the, the bills have mounted, but it's been money well spent, and it's kind of turned the tide a bit here on this battle, because I think we're being listened to a little more here. And I'm hoping, you know, I, I really don't think that folks know what's going on outside of Boston DPW. I imagine that at Boston City Hall, they're too busy with all the other things they're doing. And I want to be fair to Boston DPW, I mean, that's got to be a tough department to work in, they've got a, I've got a lot of work to do, but they don't even talk to us, and that first panel I saw you is essentially insulting what they did. And then they tell us in a cover letter, we've got all the work done, but they won't share. So, that's the update on where we are. I hope I didn't go too long.
Just long enough.
Mr. Walker had me on a very tight leash, so.
Thank you, Mr. Timmons.
But I appreciate the attention of the, the counsel, and I'm happy to answer any questions, and we'll certainly keep you advised. Council Harris has become a good friend and spends a lot of time interacting with Mr. Walker on this issue as well, so we're going to stay on it, and we can give you an update at the end of the month as some of this plays out.
Thank you, all right. President recognizes Counselor Harris.
Thank you, President. Excuse my, my throat. Jim, I'm just gonna, before I start thanking people, I'm going to ask you a question. That site visit, it was just at, at the end, where you're going to be going out, and we didn't talk about this before tonight, so I don't mean to blindside you, but does, don't you think that coincidence of the fact that the emergency order came in February and at the end of the month, all of a sudden, there's going to be a judge that's going to say, you know, what, who basically, if, if they, were they going to take a ride down the road?
Oh, yes.
You said the boat, so basically would say, okay, the bridge had to come down because, you know, the way I look at it, and I'm, and I'm just lowly bored counselor.
I thought the same.
The bridge had, the bridge came down because they were given money and they didn't use it, they didn't fix it, it became dangerous, they had to take it down. And now when somebody was going to make a decision about the bridge, am I correct? Bridge worked?
Well, there's a lot of decisions.
Decisions that's going to be made, but one of the major decisions, especially the road to get there, is going to see that all of a sudden it's an emergency. I have pictures going back and I couldn't, I couldn't get them, I, you know, unfortunately, I changed jobs and on one of the phones I had, also I have pictures that I took personally of four locations where, where the road is eroding, there's piping, there's everything. Everybody knows that, that inside asphalt is asbestos. And the fact that Boston, you know, they kind of actually have been really, really, you know, not cooperative, they've, again, this is a perfect example that you put out, this is great job by you and your team.
And the Commissioner, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the Commissioner's all over that issue. He's, he and the city engineer have been dealing with the causeway.
Yes.
That, and.
Yes, and that letter from 2019, I, I had talked to Al about, about that, and the fact that it's literally, they ignore us, Boston thinks they've, now they're in their third mayor since, think about it, it started with Marty Walsh, and then there was Mayor Campbell, and then there was, now we have Mayor Woo. Now, I'm not taking shots at any of them, but no matter what, no matter what, and I always felt in my job, when I worked for the Postal Service, anything that falls underneath me, somebody who doesn't do their job, that's on me. And if somebody's not doing the right thing, that would be on me. And all I can say is Boston hasn't been doing the right thing, and now it's laid on the third, third mayor. And especially this body, and I have to thank this body, I came to this body, the previous body, and I'm going to ask, I know I'm going to have to ask this body for more money for, for, for the legal fees. And, but this body put in place the ordinance that you mentioned earlier, the ordinance that says that only, only for local deliveries, the local deliveries, and, and, and basically, you know, that means the gun range and the fire department, they should get their local deliveries, but that doesn't include those boulders that I have people taking pictures sending to me that they threw over onto the, onto the shore.
Bayside, right.
Yes, absolutely. And, and think about, I have Bayside Road, Crabtree Road, can you imagine, they're just like those folks, they, they live in our boundaries, our territory, they have to answer to our conservation committee. I've been screaming about this for how long, right? If any, if anybody from Crabtree Road or, or Bayside Road or any of the roads in Ward One did that to protect there from being flooded, especially we, we have situations now to block, especially when the northeast, thank God the wind today was coming from the west, if it was coming from the east, I, I might not have been at the meeting today, tonight. And, but if that was to, if that was to take, again, we have that in place, I am so thrilled that the police turn them around, right at Nickerson, right at Nickerson Park, turn them right around and send them home, send them packing. And that takes, actually, doesn't that, I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, but I know, wouldn't that take the DEP out of it?
Well, one other thing that Sergeant Feierti's done, which is actually more effective and appropriate, is he's notifying them, the private contracts, if you come out here, you're just going to be turned around, so you may want to spend your time more profitably elsewhere.
Sure.
So that's kind of where we are.
Very good, and again, your, your team, the, the, we, we did spend, it was money well spent, it's a very difficult, you know, again, it's a very difficult stance, obviously, with what, what has gone on, what goes on and what's, was, was hoped to be out on, on Long Island by now, again, it's, it's over six years, and the fact that, the fact that this body, again, they slapped this body in the face by, by ignoring our rules, and I, I, I could, I, I don't want to waste anybody's, any more time, I, I could quote Marty Walsh at St. Patrick's Day a few years ago, as it's coming up to that, the anniversary, when he made fun of, you know, the fact that, you know, we had just, the Friday before, been fined, that huge fine for pollution, but think about what is being, we don't know what's going into the water that's showing up and we're getting, possibly getting blamed for, as far as when it comes to the testing and how we got fined by the federal government. Think about it, we don't know, and Commissioner Grazioso, again, in 2019, sent the letter, they ignored it. So, all I can say is to my colleagues, thank the folks that were here when we asked for the money, thank you for supporting the, the ordinance that, that was, that was mentioned about not only local deliveries, you know, I have no, again, no problem, deliver, deliver what you need to, but not the repairing should, should have gone through COM, COM, you know, Conservation Committee, and, and again, they ignored us, and I, I still think that, that it's really a pretty bad coincidence that there's going to be a site visit and all of a sudden there's an emergency order, and that, that just says, you know, if it's, if it smells like pollution, it is pollution, how's that? That's, that's as polite as I can be, I could say it another way, but thank you, thank you for, you know, putting up with my rant, and again, this body, I will be coming to you, I know, probably for money and, and whatever other ordinance we have to put in place, so if we have to stop them sooner, further down, you know, let's go for it. Thank you, folks, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Harris. Anyone else have questions? Okay, Mr. Timmons, thank you for the update, I look forward to hearing more, all right. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number two, 2024-019, an appropriation for $5,200,000 for the purchase of a new Quincy Fire Department ladder truck and two fire engines.
Thank you, and before the President recognizes Mr. Walker to talk about this item, I just want to recognize members of the Fire Department who are here with us tonight for this and the next two items on the agenda, thanks Chief Jackson, Deputy D., and the President of Fire Fighters Local 792 Tom Bowes. Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item on the agenda tonight relative to the Fire Department of Three is an appropriation request submitted last month to the body for two fire engines and a ladder vehicle. You have been given a financial summary by Municipal Finance Director Eric Mason, he's here with us today, as the President mentioned, the Fire Chief, Deputy D. and President Bowes are also with us here to answer any questions you may have. Obviously, just briefly, this is the continuation of the modernization of our Fire Department through the mayor and the cooperation of this body and the Fire Department. As you can see in the back page, we've done a great deal of updating the equipment in the Fire Department over the last 10 years. The reason we're coming before you now with this, outside of normal CIP process, is largely because of the lead time that is required now on fire apparatus. We're talking about anywhere between three to four years from date of order to being in service, and the chief and, and the team at the Fire Department knew what we needed early on this year, and we thought it would make sense for us to get before the body a little bit early to give us as much time as we can to get these necessary vehicles in service to the Fire Department in, as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Counselor McCarthy?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Walker, for that. I'd like to make a motion to approve and make a few comments if I could.
Motion to approve made by Counselor McCarthy, on the motion, seconded by Counselor Campbell. On the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, you know, the breakdown, the summary that we had in front of us, and I want to thank Eric Mason and Rick Kosher, I know they're here tonight, the bond that would be 30, 20 years at 3.77% for apparatuses and building improvements and 10 years at 3.60% for equipment, it, it's really broken down in a very simple way, I know that we need a tremendous amount of lead time for fire, for the fire trucks and how long it took us to get the ladders, it could take three or four years to sort of get a jump on this, I think is a, a smart move, with probably more to come down the road, but I want to thank also, as you said, Mr. President, Chief Jackson, Deputy Chief D., and Fire Fighter Bowes for being here tonight, they're, they're always proactive, they always seem to be able to rally the guys, rally the troops, you know, get the best out of Quincy Fire Department, the firefighters themselves, and to have these apparatuses, have the building, buildings updated and, and new equipment is, is, is always a must in, in that, in that regards to that career, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Thank you very much, Counselor McCarthy. I recognize it's Counselor Leane.
Thank you, Mr. President. Counsel McCarthy brings up a point that I want to sort of dive a little bit more into, you know, he mentioned that this is an upgrade to necessary equipment, but also the building improvements, right? And that's something that I want to just hone in on for a second here, because it's one thing for us to approve the funding, but I think we should also, and for me especially, right, I want to dive into sort of advocacy on this part, the building improvements, I think is a continuation of work that has been, you know, come in front of us a lot over, over the years, especially my time up here with capital improvement requests, and I know that they have not always been done on time, and so if we are going to approve this, which I think we should, you know, I just want to make sure that any proposed work and anticipated work is going to be prioritized. I, I know there's a lot of work getting done across the city in many different ways, I just think that, you know, we've always been so supportive of funding these very necessary needed improvements, I just would like to see them, though, get executed in a timely manner. So I guess my question here is, you know, do we have a plan for getting the $450,000 spent, you know, in a timely fashion to accommodate this equipment when we receive it?
Through you, Mr. President. I would respectfully, to some degree, disagree with the premise of the question, Counselor, but that being said, the baseline here is that these repairs that are included as part of this are strictly related to the equipment and the apparatus, the needs of the building for these particular pieces of apparatus to be held at these station houses, so quite simply, we need to get these done or we can't have the apparatus. So, it's quite basically that they need to be able to fit safely into these station houses and these repairs, and it's not a lot of money, not a ton in here for that, but that's, that's specifically what those line items are for relative to the, the equipment purchase, it's for the, make the stations accessible to the apparatus, so the one can't happen with the other, so they have to get done in a very timely and appropriate way.
Yeah, and I, I certainly don't want to say that, you know, or imply that work isn't getting done intentionally, right? I, I just think, again, it's important for me up here not just to approve funding, but also advocate for the work, and that's all I'm trying to do, you know, we're, we're coming from the same place, I think, right, it's just a matter of making sure that I say that and express that, and that we're, you know, going to continue to prioritize that, so thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Leane, can I just clarify, so I, what I think you're asking is the work going to be done internally or externally?
I wasn't, I wanted to just make sure that it's done in time to.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and ask, is this work going to be done internally?
I think it's going to be a little bit from column A, a little bit from column B, Counselor, I think there's going to be a couple of components of this that's.
That's what I thought you were saying, because I think most often we have a lot of public buildings, items that have taken maybe a while or in the queue, or we, you know, library, et cetera, so that's.
Yes, thank you, yes.
All right, yeah, I'm with you. All right, thank you, Mr. Walker, thank you, Counselor Leane, so we have motion to approve, Counselor McCarthy, okay, President recognizes Counsel DeBona.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think, I think really what, what I'm looking at here is a real good interest rate on this one, 3.77% on the Federal Reserve Economic Database, the FRED, which is the high-quality market corporate bond spot price, and it's adjusted for the tax-exempt status of the bond, which is going to be for the apparatus and the building improvements, and then a 3.6 on the equipment. Just looking at the, the equipment, the jaws of life, the thermal imaging cameras and ventilating equipment, this is very vital for our modern firefighting, I know they do a lot of training, I know some years ago with the CIP, they've come in with equipment and, that we needed, we also had to outfit some washing machines and stuff like that, so, you know, coming into 2024, I think this is a good ask coming in right now, 5.2 for the purchases of the new Quincy Fire Department ladder truck and the two fire engines. Just another, which is great of this packet that you gave us, I don't know who designed this, this packet, but on page 14, which is the last page, if anybody wants to go to it, is, is our list of what we have inventory-wise of apparatus and then also our spare vehicles, so just looking at the list, and it, it basically breaks it down by truck, make, year, miles, service start, the month and year, and then the age of, of, of the equipment. It's, it states here that you have 13 listed, and then you have four in the spare. Does this kind of, I think this is an overall question maybe for Chief or, or yourself, Mr. Walker, is, does this kind of get us by in, in what we, what we have for inventory right now out there in the city of Quincy? Is this, is this equipment going to be able to make it, even with these two vehicles coming in with a three to four-year wait?
Yeah, so, thank you for the question, good evening, Counsel President.
Good evening, Chief.
Members of the council, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Chief.
I'm happy to answer whatever questions you'll have tonight, but thank you, Counselor, for the question, so, yes, so like Counselor McCarthy was saying, the lead time, one of the ladder truck that I'm asking for tonight is a tiller truck, it's going to be about a five-year build, the two engines are about three and a half years out, and so you'll see, like you were referring to just now, Counselor DeBona, on that page 14, so we still have four 2007 engines in service, and down How's Neck, we have a 2005, so we're waiting on delivery of a truck that the council was good enough to approve and the mayor was good enough to approve a couple of years ago. When that engine comes in, in about a year, it'll go down to Quincy Point, and that 2007 E1 will go down to How's Neck, and that 2005 that we're looking at on page 14 will then become a spare, but that still leaves us with four 2007 engines in play in frontline service that are. in frontline service that are, you know, 17, 18 years old. So we have to start moving on these engines right now. So to get these two approval tonight for these two engines and the ladder and the pipeline will be an enormous help, huge help.
So I'm glad you broke it down, Chief, with the five-year build on one and then the three-and-a-half-year wait on the other two.
Correct, yeah. In a post-COVID world, unfortunately, prior to COVID, 10 months, a year.
Where is that lime green?
It's ladder four down How's Neck.
Down in How's Neck. And that, basically, you guys acquired over the last year or two to kind of supplement because of the situation.
Correct, kind of like a stopgap truck. It's 30 years old, which some of the NFPA standards might have a problem with that. But the sharp end of the conversation is that truck was kept inside in Wisconsin. They took really, really good care of that truck. I mean, we got like a museum piece. That truck will be in service for some years to come. We got very fortunate, pretty much jackpot lucky, finding that thing for $35,000. So it doesn't have a lot of the modernization that these engines that we're talking about now. This is a totally different animal. But as a stopgap measure to put that down How's Neck for right now, that was clutch, really good.
I remember when we had it outside here of City Hall about two years ago with Counsel McCarthy, we were out front. But it was very nice to have that. Folks around the city were asking, why did you go with that, like, yellow lime green? And I says, because we need kind of something to kind of get us to where we have the build-out of new equipment coming in. So I appreciate it, Chief, for coming in tonight. I thank you for this list. It gives us a breakdown of everything.
Thank you, Eric Mason.
Eric Mason did a great job with that. Thank you. And it really kind of gives us, you know, a camera lens of what we have out there. I just want to thank you for all you guys' hard work out there.
Thank you. Thank you for the support. The council's been fantastic. The mayor, I mean, it's been, couldn't ask for more. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you for everything. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Dabana. Thank you, Chief. Any other questions for my colleagues? Okay, we have a motion approved. Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Dabana.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Number three, 2024-023, order home rule petition in act relative to retired Quincy firefighter.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Recognizing Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. As you read this home rule petition, it is relative to Deputy Fire Chief Kevin Bythrow. Deputy Chief Bythrow had more than 30 years of service to the city as a firefighter. He retired and last year subsequently was diagnosed with Parkinson's disease. Parkinson's disease, unfortunately, is not covered under the permanent disability laws in Massachusetts for firefighters. We aim to change that with this legislation tonight on behalf of Deputy Bythrow. Deputy Bythrow, over the course of his career, was exposed on a number of occasions, as were his brother firefighters, to chemicals that studies have shown repeatedly, and we can certainly provide those to this body, that particularly pesticides. There was the Home Depot fire in the mid-'90s that most of you were alive for, I think, at that time. But some may remember. In particular, pesticides in that fire have been proven to cause Parkinson's disease. Deputy Bythrow himself would be here tonight except he is at a legislative conference at Florine Hall, speaking on behalf of all of his firefighters in the hopes of getting the legislature and the state government to permanently include Parkinson's disease among the environmental risks that firefighters face every day. So we are proudly submitting this. We certainly owe this to Deputy Bythrow for his service to the community. And we hope to engage our state delegation in the coming months to get this done on behalf of him and his family. They deserve literally nothing less than this. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. And if it wasn't stated, this is a home rule petition. So our recommendation then goes to the Senate and to the House of Representatives in general court. President recognizes Counsel Harris.
Yes, so we can, I want to make a motion to approve. We don't have to go to the Ordinance Committee on this one, I don't think. It'd be a waste of time. Let's make this done. Let's make this happen. It's the right thing to do.
Okay.
I'll cut that, that's shorter than my last session on the.
Thank you, Counsel Harris.
Thank you.
Motion to approve, Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Liang. On the motion, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're very familiar with the Bythro's. I want to recognize Rick and Paul Bythrow, Kevin's brothers, that are here tonight. This is a great piece of legislation. And as Mr. Walker said, regards to Parkinson's and other issues that have come up with other firefighters, it's a step in the right direction to protect them. Kevin put in many years of service. And as he retired, he ran into this. And it's been quite a journey for the Bythro's recently. Kevin's doing a little better, but it's not going to go away. This will really be a big help in regards to retirement issues, hospital medical issues, et cetera. So I'm in full support and hope that the legislation moves on this quickly and enacts it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. President recognizes Counsel Dabana.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to echo the same sentiments from Counsel McCarthy. Kevin Bythrow, very good firefighter over the city of Quincy for many, many years. See his family members here tonight. Just recently ran into Kevin over at the Fowler House. He'd just gotten out of the hospital, and he was in good spirits. So it's very important for our, you know, this body of government right here at the city council level to approve this. And he'll also get my full support on this. And then he'll go, signed by the mayor, and then obviously go up to Senate and House of Representatives. So please keep your thoughts and prayers with the Bythrow family day by day. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Dabana. Okay, we have a motion to approve from Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Liang. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Rash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Devine.
Counsel Dabana.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please, next item on the agenda.
Number four, 2024-024, an order, a home rule petition in act authorizing the appointment of retired firefighters for special firefighters in the city of Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. President recognizes Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order is self-explanatory. This basically creates the same system for filling fire details as we currently have for police details. And the police department, the way it works, goes through active for private and required details, go through the active roster of police officers and command staff. And if there's no availability, the list then jumps to retirees. This would give the Fire Chief the ability to do the same thing. Over the course of the last decade, five years, we've obviously seen a growing number of fire details required, the amount of construction that gets done in the city. Over that time period, it really has increased the amount of required fire details. The chief is here, as well as Solicitor Timmons, as to questions relative to the special legislation, which requires, this is another home rule petition. This will require the approval of the House and the Senate, and signature from the governor as well.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Motion approved, Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Seconded, Counsel Campbell, on the motion. Nope, okay. On the motion, nope. All right. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Dabana.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item. Motion approved, made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Dabana. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Dabana.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton. President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk, next item.
2024-026, a gift $5,000 from Copeland Family Foundation, Inc.
Motion approved, made by Counsel Dabana, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. On the motion, seeing, on the motion, Counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to thank you for the Copeland Family Foundation for $5,000. This goes to good work to the friends of Walston Beach with all the work over there, especially with the cleanups and all the different events that they have throughout the entire year. So thank you to everybody over there. And thank you for the Copeland Family Foundation for donating the funding. And if we could give a letter of thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Counsel Dabana. Can we also send thank you notes to the last contribution to the Derek contributions, please? Seeing no more, Counsel Dabana speak. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Rash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Dabana.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you very much. Approval of previous meeting minutes.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve by Counsel Dabana, seconded by Counsel Liang. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Communications and reports from the mayor and other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk.
Yes, I have a utility to refer to Public Works Committee for schedule and advertising. Grant a location, National Grid Verizon, Harvard Street and Granger Street. And traffic request to refer to Ordinance Committee for advertising, Ward Five, Counsel Minton. Ad stop sign at Gould Street, eastbound intersecting with West Elm Ave. An ad stop sign on Gould Street, northwest bound, intersecting with East Elm Ave.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Unfinished business in proceeding meeting, seeing none. Reports of committees, Public Works Committee, Counsel Harris.
Public hearing was held prior to this evening's city council meeting on the following orders. 2024-016, National Grid Verizon, Independence Ave, Plymouth Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion for approval.
Motion to approve, do you run that? Motion to approve, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Do we take a roll on that? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Dabana.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
Thank you.
2024-017, National Grid Verizon, Franklin Street and Ritchie Road, excuse me. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion for approval.
Motion approved, made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Ash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Dabana.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
2024-018, MBTA charging station, National Grid, Independence Ave, Federal Ave and Goddard Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Motion approved, made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Rash.
Yes.
Counsel Campbell.
Yes.
Counsel Dabana.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Minton.
Yes.
President Kane.
Yes.
Eight members.
That's it. Thank you.
Counsel Harris. President recognizes Counsel Liang on ordinance committee.
Thank you. There's this one out of traffic, and this was advertised in the February 8th Quincy Sun. And so this is in Ward Three, 2024-15, at Handicap Parking at 24 Walnut Street. Motion to approve.
Motion approved, made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Campbell. Madam Clerk, please call a roll.
Counsel Ash.